You know, I probably have a lot of comments or better prepared comments hopefully by your next meeting since I haven't had a chance to work with Chief for these meetings. So, but I just wanted to get a chance to be here this evening and I was gonna watch.
Call the January 6th meeting in the Fairbury City Council Board of Roll Call please.
Norris.
Here.
Gertis Hips.
Here.
Hassleton.
Here.
Kennett.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Huffman.
Here.
Slagle.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Would you please stand and say please.
President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice over all.
Do you have a copy of before you of the minutes from the last council meeting or any more additions or corrections to them? Have motion on floor from Alderman Kennett second to Alderman Slagle to approve the minutes of the December 16th meeting roll call.
Norris.
Yes.
Gertis Hips.
Yes.
Hassleton.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Huffman.
Yes.
Slagle.
Do you have a copy of the board report listing the bills against the city so far this month? There aren't a lot as we're living in the month. Couple of big ticket items for a lift and a skid.
Motion to approve and charging the accounts man.
I'll second.
Have a motion on floor from Alderman Kennett second from Alderman Huffman to pay the bills and charging the respective accounts roll call.
Norris.
Yes.
Gertis Hips.
Yes.
Hassleton.
Yes.
Kennett.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Huffman.
Yes.
Slagle.
Yes.
Wayne, there's a couple more up here if you need a couple of seats up here. Okay, we've got tonight, we've got several people with us from Timber Ridge to express some concerns over the sewage system out there. So we'll get, we'll let you guys speak in the order that you turn in your requests. So Wayne, I'll put, I'll put you on the floor first.
I missed that.
Yeah, well, we've got several of you to go speak, so we're going to let you speak in the order in which you turn in your requests. Okay, so you're up first.
Fine, my name is Wayne Kurth. I live at 30 Timber Ridge Drive in Fairbury. We've been here now 36 years and real proud of our town. We got water out of our floor drains in our home. We only have one floor drain in the house and it happens to be underneath the middle of my furnace. So putting a sand pipe in is not a solution for, for this issue. You can see there's a number of people here tonight and some of us, that's the first time that we've ever had water like that. But I got some, some thoughts on this. You know, we talk about the current lift station out here. Does it have adequate capacity? And I'm gonna tell you, yes, I think it has adequate capacity. It's working just fine right now. We're not having any backup in our floor drains, are we? So it's working. It's doing what it's supposed to do. It's got pumps. Takes our sewage to the lift station on 7th Street and takes it north to the main sewage facility. Does a nice job. I know the city's planning a, an upgrade to our whole system. That's a pretty expensive proposition. And before you plan on doing that, I hope that you'll take a look at what is going on in our subdivision as well as probably the other areas in town as well. Our system out there is a closed system. Does everybody know what that means? That means that you are not permitted to put anything in there but wastewater from your home. Your stool, your sinks, your showers, your washer, your dishwasher, your stool. That's all that goes in there. You're not allowed to run your sump pumps into it. You're not allowed to run your downspouts from your homes into it. That's all identified in the codes that you set up for our city to protect us. And when people get stormwater up to their floor drains, you're bringing all the bacteria in that whole sewage system right into your home. And every one of us here has had that problem. We're not very happy about it. Some people have had it numerous times, spent thousands of dollars to clean it up. And it shouldn't be happening because there's adequate capacity to take care of it. I'm gonna talk for just a second here about some of the city codes. Under your 5-8 sewer code, you've got .04 says buildings and sewer connections. And I want you to understand that based on that, a building sewer permit will only be issued and a sewer connection shall only be allowed if it can be demonstrated that the downstream sewage facilities, including the sewers, the pump stations, the waste treatment facilities have sufficient reserve to capacity to adequately and efficiently, adequately and efficiently, right? Handle the additional anticipated load. Now, we've gone from a subdivision out there of 32 homes. And over these 36 years, we've grown to 71 houses out there now. And that system is still adequate to get everything from there out to the plant out north of town. Still does the job. Runs, runs fine. Also under that section, .04. Section I says no person shall make connections of roof, downspout, sump pumps, exterior or interior foundation drains, areaway drains, that's like if you have a drain in your garage or out front somewhere, you can't connect those things to the sewer. It's a closed system. You can't, you can't introduce surface runoff or groundwater to a building sewer or a building drain, which in turn is connected directly to a public sanitary sewer. There's also a section K associated with that and I printed off your information from the website. It says the applicant for the building sewer permit shall notify the superintendent of public works when the building sewer is ready for inspection and connection to the public sewer. And it says the connection shall be made under the supervision of the superintendent of public works or his representative. So what I want you to understand here is we've got a closed sewer system. It's got adequate capacity. And when a new home permit is issued, they have to check that out and say, yeah, we've got enough pump capacity to handle it. We can get it north of town, take care of the problem. And they also, the city supervises the installation of that connection to the sewer, to that closed system. And in your section .05, use of public works, it says no, no person shall discharge or cause to be discharged any stormwater, surface water, groundwater, roof runoff, surface drainage, uncontaminated cooling water, or unsleptated industrial process water to any sewer. Stormwater and all other unpolluted drainage shall be discharged to sewers as are specifically designed and combined sewers. That's not a combined sewer. It's a closed system. So the only thing going into that system is water out of our homes. So what happened? We've had these, these storms, right? So if you just look at the flow coming out of that pump station, it becomes unmanageable. The pump station didn't fail. There's water, there's stormwater being introduced to our closed system and it has to be stopped. What's happening there is people are illegally putting water into your sewage system. They're not paying for that privilege like the rest of us are paying. Where we pay based on our usage, our water usage. So at these times, when these giant storms come through, you're paying for three Walmart parking lots to be emptied back behind us. I, I will say that people have to have their downspouts and perhaps their sump pumps connected to these systems. And it's a closed system. That's illegal. They're not allowed to do that. It needs to be stopped. And if it is stopped, my home won't get sewage in it anymore and their homes won't get sewage in it anymore.
I think you just very well, you gave a very good explanation of what we believe the problem is. There's just, there's too much, the fact, the fact that the system works fine during the dry period and then we're overwhelmed when it rains. You hit it on the head. We're getting water in there that's not supposed to be in there.
How many times in the last five years have we had 500 year rains? At least twice, maybe three times.
We've had, we've had it twice in the last two years.
I've not had water during any of those events. Nothing. This is the first time. So we finally reached a point where people are putting enough stormwater into the system that it totally exceeds the capacity. Now, other people have been inundated with water during some of these other storms. I have a tri-level. I'm probably five feet higher in the ground than the people around me. My neighbor to the right, Derek, can't think of his name. Anyway, he didn't get watered. But the previous owner of the home spent about $10,000 putting in a, a special pump to discharge water so his house wouldn't be affected. He shouldn't have to do that in the public sewer. We're supposed to be protected by that sewer system. What happens, we're at the, we're at the end of that line. That line comes from the back of our subdivision. And that lift station is just to the right of my home. As I walk out my front door, it's right there by my home. And I'm the last guy on the line before it starts pumping to 7th Street. And like I say, I've never had it before. But every house out there acts as a, as a pop-off valve for that closed system if it's being overstressed by people putting stormwater in it. So I'm asking you to come up with a way of doing it and quickly because the rains are coming again real quick. You're gonna get another taste of it here in the next three or four days.
That's, Wayne, Wayne has, Wayne has had a couple of conversations with me over the last couple of days, very in-depth conversations. And he and I were talking and the starting point is, I'm sure, as far as the inspections, most of the, most of the original subdivision, that was before that, we, that, those sewers was put in before, we had nothing to do with inspecting. That's something that's come about since then in the newer part. I, you can just about bet if anybody has a downspout that goes down into the ground, it's going into our system because there's no place else to take. And the sump pumps, and I would almost bet that there are footing drains that go in there too. We were talking to John and I know in John's case, when his house is built, Melvin Zimmerman built and I was aware of what he did, what Melvin did was ran the footing drain and ran a tile out the back to help the creek because John didn't even have a pump out there.
He's got a natural drainage mechanism for stormwater. Goes right out into the creek like it's supposed to.
And there's a lot of them that I'm sure are in there. So the options are to start with, we can send the guys out there in any place that there's a downspout going in the ground, okay, you will cut it off and run it across the top of the ground.
Well, you have every right to knock on people's doors and with the proper, proper identification for the employees that are gonna do that. Ask them where their sump pumps go to. And if there's any question, you can put dye in that sump pump and you can take a look and and if it's coming into a closed system out of their sump pump, that's illegal water coming into the city system. We're taxing it.
We can smoke it. Another option that, that we can do, it's, it's, it's an expensive option. So the homeowners wouldn't be happy is we can actually get in your sewer and televise it. We can run a television. And the sad thing, if, if we go to that point, if we get out there five, 10 feet and we see a T, okay, we know what you've done. Whoever built it has put, has dumped it. At that point, fine, because unfortunately with EPA regulations, there's no such thing as grandfather. The house may be 40 years old, but if your footing tile goes into it, then now we're gonna say, now, we're sorry, Mr. Smith, and I'm just putting that name hypothetically. You're going to have to put a system out there. You're gonna have to put a, basically an overgrown pit or a culvert on end and put a pump in it and pump it across your yard. But it's, because right now where we're at, we've got, we've got two 200 gallon a minute pumps in there. The unfortunate thing is the force main is a four inch and as Leroy was talking, it's, you started out four inch almost, well, almost 50 years ago in 19, I think the first house was built in 68 out there. So I'm sure you don't have four inch. That pipe won't take any more water. We can't, we, we, we can't put a bigger pump because you just can't pump it.
You don't need a bigger pump. People can take three hour showers out there. Everybody can shower tonight, you know, and we're not gonna get water.
No, you're right. And you, you, you did a very good job of describing what the problem is out there that we're facing. And it's, we've, we've faced with people's gravity sewers. I've had neighbors out in the condos been flooded three times in the last 18 months. That's a gravity sewer and it happens. Your system, if they're not introducing all this extra water, it can't back into it. Basically out of the plan, we're gonna talk about later, we're, we're spending, we're gonna have to spend a total of the next few years of 18.8 million dollars. Right now, I'm looking at the numbers, just short of a half million dollars of that is for a new lift station and a new force main for Timber Ridge. We will be, we'll be upgrading. We'll be putting a, a bigger lift station out there and a bigger force main all the way to 7th Street. The 7th Street, that's going to be increased in size. That, the, the new one, that new lift station's 36 years old. That has to be replaced because we have to bring stormwater now from the low part of the town down here. We've got to bring all that. The whole, the whole thing, the, the whole system, what it amounts to is the EPA doesn't care about my basement or your basement or what it costs. That's all they care about is we put stormwater in their creek and hurt one of their little fishies. And the way that, the way that works is we have to start out at the plant first. And the plant, we're looking basically about just shy of 13 million dollars. And then we work backwards.
Lynn, what if, what if your premise for the need for this is, is not all completely accurate because you've got so many people across all the town dumping their systems in there and so you are processing stormwater. Oh yeah. And you shouldn't be processing it. It's not necessary. It should go through the normal drainage channel.
And the problem we have with the main part of the town, the old part of the town is a combined system. So all these grates that you see in the corners, all that runs into the, into the system too. So the, and we're, we're paid based on the water that goes through the meters because that's how we charge you for sewer. So we, we pay for a lot of stormwater to treat it that we're not being paid for. But when, in a case like this, now you're actually injecting water in the system that shouldn't be there. Yeah, and it, it, it costs the city to treat that and there's no, no revenue stream.
That's no different than somebody taking and, and taking pay television and pirating that.
Same thing. And basically with the project, it's broken down into four phases. But it, the project, we've got to start out there. Because if we start backwards and start out like in Timber Ridge, well, fine, we get all that done. We can't have the plant.
Sure.
But since it's broken into four phases, you don't have to do this and then this. We, we may be working all four phases at the same time.
Sure. But the, the guess, the thing that I would ask the council to do is in, within the next seven to 10 days, have inspectors go out and find out who is out there illegally. And they don't have to dig their yard up to get their sump pump off that system. But they're gonna have a marshy area out in front of their homes or out by the curb. And I knew down at my house.
To me that, I, to me, that's what I would, from just what we've talked, I'd like to see, let's, let's get downspouts off and sump pumps out because we really don't want to start, I don't really want to open that can of worms yet going out and televising these and saying, okay, now you gotta, you gotta dig and put this, this big container in your front yard and pump all your footing drain across.
But you, do you meter the water coming out of that lift station? Or you can meter it, can't you?
No, not really. There's no meter, there's no way metering it. I mean, we, we know what the pump is capable of pumping, the capability, but we don't know with, because basically it comes out, that goes under the creek and back down that 7th Street lift station. It goes into that station, that's pumped in another force main and it goes by force main to almost the railroad tracks. And then from just the south side of railroad tracks, it, it's actually a gravity system from there to the plant. So we've got really no way to, to meter other than we know that.
It's adequate 99% of the time, 99.5% of the time, it's just fine.
And then what happened this time, and where you've got buying some of the other big ones, you're fine. They come, you get a four or five inch rain. We had a saturated ground when it started. So all that extra, if it was in a sump pump.
Which meant you had that much more pirated water going into your sewage system. So
You hit it right on the head.
Let's go back and get it at the start and, and people should not be putting water in there illegally.
No, well, that's, you and I have talked, we've talked amongst ourselves that this is the first place to start because we've got problems in other areas of town. We know that some, that this plant will solve, this plant will solve some of them. Unfortunately, it's not gonna solve them all because we've got a combined system. It's like Walnut Street over here. We just spent, I can't remember how, what it was, hundred and some thousand dollars and we slip lined it if you saw that happen. So basically, we've got a brand new slick clean sewer all the way down Walnut Street. And you saw what happened. And I, I've never seen that in my life. In the last year, I've seen it twice. Water from sidewalk to dave, from sidewalk to sidewalk for two blocks. And, and that's, all intent, that's a brand new sewer clear down past 7th Street, but the rest of the system is just so loaded that we can't handle it. But, no, you, you've hit the problem right on the head and that's basically where we're going to start. To start doing that and we don't have a problem getting out there and just saying, okay, sorry, you guys got to be cut off and run across the ground.
When will this happen?
Pardon?
When will this happen?
Well, we, we can come out and start tagging. It'll be, it'll be up to homeowner to get it done. We don't do that. We don't pay for that. But, you know, we, we could start looking at that tomorrow. That's not a problem. That's not an issue. Judy.
Lynn, it's my concern with this and I agree with Wayne 100%, but it was expressed to me Monday night this past storm that these homeowners have already been identified that have their downspouts and whatever.
If they have, I don't know who they, who did it, Judy, because we're not aware of any of them.
Leroy told me that we do know that there's families out there and they've been asked to remove them and they refused.
What's that, I'm, I'm hearing this for the first time.
I don't recall saying that.
For real? Okay.
Talking about downspouts.
Did you tell me that, that you're the one that told me it's the city sump pumps that are going back into the drain that's causing the overload?
That's what we feel it's doing.
That's what we feel it's doing. We feel, as Wayne said, we feel it's sump pumps and highways.
And I said, so what are we doing about that? And you said there have been families that have been contacted, people contacted, and they're not doing anything about it. And I said, what am I gonna do? Have police write tickets or not write tickets anymore? Does y'all slow down and not write tickets? You don't recall that conversation?
I don't recall the conversation.
Well, we, we're assuming.
We went out and smoked it.
Yeah, we smoked test.
We went and smoked test for the subdivision.
There were no downspouts coming into the sewer. There were no opening drains in anybody's yard. It either has to be footing tiles and or sump pumps. That's the problem.
Okay, so sump pumps, and no one has ever been contacted about there's some pump going back into the city drain out in Timber Ridge?
I haven't.
They, nobody's been contacted since I've been there. I've been mayor for two and a half and, and no one has been contacted. There were, there were a couple, I know, new houses being built that they were told to get them out because they stuck them in there temporarily.
Okay, that's fine because I was told that there was and they had been contacted and they refused to do that. My comment was, we don't have police since they slowed down and don't write tickets. So obviously the city does have records.
If we, if we, yeah, if we tell them, take it out, Judy, and they don't, we, I guarantee we will find them.
All right, thank you.
Wayne, did you see you have sewer come up your basement or stormwater under your drains?
Anything that comes up through a closed system is sewer.
It's sewer.
It can be the cleanest looking water you ever saw. It'll have bacteria in it.
Why is your floor drain in your basement hooked up to the sewer?
Well, by, by, by state plumbing code, it has to be. Well, because it's part.
So why can't your garage be? I mean, they're both floor drains or not?
You, you, you can, you can hook a garage, you can hook a garage to it up. An inside garage, if the garage is under that 400 square feet, if it's over that, you've got to put an oil intercept drain. State plumbing would cover that.
The houses too, because if you have a water heater in your basement.
That's all, that's all part of the system.
Somewhere the water has to go.
My floor drains are all part of the sanitary system. In fact, the old French drains like they used to put in the garage where they would, they would put maybe three or four feet of, of gravel and then they put a 12 by 12 tile and agreed with the state outlaw that was 10, 15 years ago. You, if you put a drain in the garage, it has to be connected to the sanitary system. It has to be vented just like plumbing. I tell you, because I, I put those.
It has to be connected, a garage drain, you're saying?
If you build a new, if you build a new house now, you, you have to connect it to the sanitary sewer system. If you try anything else and the state plumber inspector comes in, you better have partners on and jack it in. I know because I cussed every garage I had to put a drain in because it's better trying to get a drain in a garage and vent it and all that stuff. But that's, that's state law. No, we'll, I will, we'll start out there. We'll start looking. We'll start knocking on doors. That's not a problem.
I have a question. Is out at Timber Ridge, do they not, you guys, is there not street drains?
No. Their, their, theirs is the same thing as Edgeview, Benny subdivision. None, the newer subdivisions.
All closed.
They're, they're, yeah, there's no, there's no street.
My subdivision, the ditch there does not go into the sewer?
No, no, that, anything that goes in that ditch there goes in that retention pond behind that last row houses. And then it goes from there by tile out into the waterways. But no, so there should be, there should be absolutely no runoff water that gets into that system, but it is.
If, if, if nothing happens, we're gonna, we're gonna have the same situation again.
We'll start.
And we just, we just can't have that. I mean, we're, we've got good neighbors. And I don't know, you can't say that your neighbors don't understand you got a problem when they see stuff that you've drug out of your basement, you know, and you've got everything out there and it's been wet and you, and you've got to throw your, your belongings away. They know there's a problem.
Oh yeah.
So.
Yeah, and you, you guys, and this is the first time that they really had a problem. We've got problems in other areas of town unfortunately. Like you say, I've got neighbors that have been flooded three times in the last 18 months.
Yeah, we talked about that.
But there's nothing, there's nothing we can do about that.
But this is a closed system.
In your case, we, in your case, there's something we.
Since it's a closed system, if it was, if it didn't have capacity, it wouldn't have capacity tonight, right now.
You're right. The, the capacity was.
A lot of money too.
Oh yeah. Pardon?
Also cost business a lot of money too.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's, it's gonna cost us a half million bucks, but it's something we gotta do.
There's nothing worse to take care of either.
Oh yeah, that's, I have been there. It's nasty.
Lynn, did you state this is the first time we've had a problem on Timber Ridge?
This is, this is the first time I've been aware that we've had a problem out there. I don't know.
Okay.
Yes, someone else had, but it's, it's nothing I've ever been aware of. Okay, Rita, George, you wanna?
Pretty much all that I was going to say has been addressed and I don't really want to argue with repetition. When I submitted my application to speaker tonight, I had attached photos.
Right here.
So I'm hoping that you all.
We've all, we, the, all the guys have got copies of it. We made copies and passed them out.
Thank you. I did want to say that this is our second time in two years that we have had sewage in our basement. And we have only lived there three years.
You've only been there about three years, yeah. Now, see, that, no one has ever brought up the fact to me or to us that you've had a problem. I know we've got problems in other parts of town all the time, so.
My husband talked to someone after the first occurrence and we just assumed that the people that were responsible were taking care of things. And now here it came back a year later making a terrible, and my house still stinks. I don't know what to say. I'm not knowledgeable about lift stations and sewers. But I would like to express how important this is going to be to get this taken care of right away. And I know that a lot of people leave this state for the winter. So I'm not sure how you're gonna contact them. But it seems like these heavy rains are more prevalent. And so we need to do something ASAP, but.
We'll start, we'll start checking. We don't have, I don't have a problem doing that. Not at all.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We will get busy on it and see what we can do. We'll do everything we can to relieve the problem until we get the station changed. Walton, Marilyn?
Yeah, I just briefly, you know, I, you saw, you say you're going to solve the problem. I believe you. You're gonna go out and do this.
We're gonna try.
This is what we're gonna ask. I have lived there 46 years. I do not have a basement. I live in a tri-level. I have never had a drop of water. And I had sewer water. I had to spend thousands of sewer pro. They just left today. They, they've been in since last. They just left today. They, they've been in since last Thursday. I just want this to be a distant memory.
We want you to be having a distant memory, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll do, we'll do what we can to keep it until we get the, the new station.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you folks for...
Why can't we, how come you can't, uh, have a ruse valve when you go up, question?
Well, basically, there's, there's been talk about, we've been, it's brought up several times. Well, there's a valve out there that Frankie would have opened it and were fine. Uh, there, there is a, there was an overflow and that tank was put in. There was an overflow. So if the system got overflowed, it ran into the creek. Of course, the EPA deemed that illegal many years ago. That's the reason there's a valve put on. The problem with that, uh, it sounds like it's magical, but if, uh, if I, if this is, if this is your tank and this is the pipe coming out, it's fine as long as the creek's down here. But in the case like it was in this one in the spring, and the water's up here, if they could go under the water and open that valve, and all the creek water from here up, it heads back in that plant. And once it gets in there, then it, it's headed back down the lateral into everybody's basement. So that's, yeah, the valve is, uh, you can't do it. Years, years and years ago, uh, there were situations that wasn't that lift station. Another one that it was, uh, you know, the pump went down that, so you pump it out in a ditch and you contact EPA next morning. You sanitize the ditch. They don't even let you do that anymore. You don't even want to know what the fine for that is. But as far as a relief, no, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no practical legal way we can do it. Because it, but there has been some discussion about that valve and that was kind of a misnomer. If the creek, if, if your system were flooding and the creek level was below that, yeah, that would work, but we can't open it because EPA don't let you. But in the cases when you've got water, the creek level is above that pipe, and if you don't open the valve, the water would run out of the creek into that system. And then you would have had a goddamn mess. Anything else? Judy?
Lynn, um, I want to tell everyone, I appreciate you giving us the audience and whatever, and, and appreciate your promise to action. How soon do you think we will know and, and have these removed?
We could, we, I tell you what, we can get our heads together in the morning and we can get started yet this week, going knocking on doors. And we'll figure out who, who we can get out there to do it. And we can start knocking on doors and checking the sump pumps.
Okay, so...
Because we, see, the, the newer part of the subdivision, well, I can say it newer, but the round, back around the lake and some of those on the south side, we've got a good handle on those because we're involved with whole building process, so we know where those sump pumps go. But it's, it's, uh, it's basically all down the old part. We don't have a clue who's got them where.
Okay. Because I know, um, apparently I should have come to you. You weren't mayor at the time. The first time I had water back in my basement was two thousand eight. And I knew it was coming up through the drains, but I kept thinking perhaps it was my problem. And then I know last year George and Rita, um, had their problem. Then they came up and talked to someone. They did not talk to you, the mayor, so you don't know that and I understand that and appreciate that. But, um, ended up making an insurance claim and then get reimbursed and whatever. So, um, you know, I guess we're all here, that's together, unified, so everybody hears the same thing. And you know the problem and, and you can take the appropriate action and I truly appreciate that.
And that, and that's what we want to do, because the thing is, we've got a two-hundred gallon pump there. But, uh, these modern sump pumps, the ones that I always used at a high lift would pump twenty-five hundred gallons, uh, an hour. Some, some of them I put in and pump three thousand. Well, if you've got a, a two-hundred ga, a two-hundred gallon pump out here, I, I could, with ten sump pumps, I could overcome that pump.
And, and what, about Monday night, about what time did the water start going back down, George?
Uh, about nine, something like that.
So the rain is still out there. The outside water is still present. Everything is the same except for all that pressure on the sewer from water that should not be introduced.
No, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll start looking at and just seeing. Well, just tell the people it's here and we'll give them, you know, you, you, you make a faithful effort in a couple of weeks and we'll be back.
Thank you.
Because that's, that's, that's the place to start. Rita?
If, if they won't do it, if they won't take their downspouts off.
Well, if, if, if they, if they won't, if they won't do it, honestly, we dig through ours.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I think we, we could dig through our urbanizes. There, there is a magnet and they can be fine.
Okay.
And, and we, we can force the issue, we will. I can't, I can't see anybody that, we've never had problems when we've asked somebody, say, you can't do this. Uh, we've never really had any problems remedying it that I'm aware of.
Just for the record, Lynn, it does cost extra on your homeowner's insurance policy to have damages. And they do cover for city sewer backup, but whatever deductible you have, and then you have to buy the insurance.
However, my daughter is the head at Country Financial. You can't keep putting in claims. I didn't have insurance, okay? This was private pay for us. But she told me tonight, if this keeps happening, after two times, they'll cancel.
Jenny, Jenny will give you two, and by two, you've got to solve the problem.
So you're still not going to be able to...
Because even, uh, the problems that I've talked to several people and they've been proactive where they kept getting water, there are ways. Uh, there, there, being a plumber for forty years, there's no situation that a plumber can't cure. Some of them are expensive. Uh, so, I mean, you can solve every, every problem. And that's what the insurance company is looking at. If you've got a problem, we'll pay you once. If we pay you the second time, we're done, because at that point, they say, you're going to have to be proactive and do it yourself.
Exactly. And I guess my point, Marilyn, is that we're paying extras. Homeowners should do something that we shouldn't have to.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, exactly, yeah. But in the meantime, I paid a lot to Servpro. They're not...
Oh, yeah. No, I know.
But, you know, I couldn't live, Frank, you were in there. It didn't smell too good. And you did come out and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for coming over.
But there was an issue, am I right? I had, I had an issue.
Everybody had one.
Well, thanks for coming up. Yes, sir?
Well, the minutes to this may even be published?
Yeah.
How, what for? In the newspaper or?
Uh, no, actually, the minutes are put on our website. You have to go to the city website.
On the website? Okay.
They'll, they'll be on the website, but they'll be approved. It won't, they're not verbatim. We don't publish, nobody publishes verbatim. It'll, it'll just be, word for word is what I'm saying, no. But the gist, but the, the gist of it...
It'll be like a corporate report.
Well, I hope they have.
And I tell you, uh, you're Mr. Franklin, aren't you?
My name's Dave Franklin.
That's why I said, Mr. Franklin. Nancy said she'll mail you a copy.
Oh, that'd be great.
What's your, what's your address out there?
Twenty-seven in the Ridge.
Twenty-seven? We'll mail, when she gets them done, we'll mail you a copy.
I appreciate that.
Not a problem. Okay, uh, anything else?
Yep.
Okay, Martin?
I'm nothing.
Frank? Duane's here, I think, excuse me. Yeah, Duane? Chief's not here. Leroy?
Nothing.
Paul is not going to be with us tonight. Alderman Norris?
No.
Alderman Gertis Hitch?
Yeah.
Alderman Hassleton? Alderman Kennett? Alderman Weber? Alderman Hoffman?
Nothing.
Alderman Slagle?
Nothing.
This is rare one under old business. We don't have anything. So, uh, basically, the first one under new business is we want to start discussing, uh, we're talking about going to a monthly utility building versus the bi-monthly that we're doing now. You have a, you have a copy of a survey that apparently Farnsworth threw this, Leroy? Comparing, we, we were wanting to compare what sewer rates were. The only problem was is they didn't put February in here, so you can't compare. We'll have them revise it, put February in here, so we know.
They weren't in a study.
What's that?
They weren't in the study that was done by that company. That's why it's not on there.
Well, but they, they need, they need to add those so we can compare the apples to the apples. It's, it's, it's hard to compare, it's hard to compare somebody's rate to our rate if we don't know what our rate is for the fifty-two hundred fifty gallons, is what I'm saying. So it needs, it needs to be, they need to add a column to that, so when we set or make a decision, we can see that this is what everybody else is charging. This is what we're charging.
I think Brad can tell us that number and we can draw a little line or something.
We, we could, we could, we could get the numbers to you. That's why I talked to Leroy. No, 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 no.
Farnsworth, Farnsworth?
That's what Leroy told me.
Farnsworth sent it to us.
Sent it to us, yeah.
There's three different copies.
Yeah. They didn't do it just for us, no. But what we need to do, and I talked to Leroy before the meeting, we need to add ours on here. So we can do, Brad can do that and get it back to us the next meeting. Would you do that, Brad?
I'm doing it right now.
Okay, well, bring it back next time. Actually, if you can give it to us pretty quick, we can pencil in there so we can start looking at it. We'll go on to the next item while you're doing that.
For just sewer for fifty-two fifty, you're like, it's just under thirty bucks.
Just under thirty?
Yeah.
Currently?
For fifty-two fifty, it's just under thirty.
Just for sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that, that, this is for a month. Well, for fifty-two hundred fifty gallons.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
They're in base, they're figuring out a month.
Okay. That'll give, that'll give you guys something to look at, some idea where to go, because we're going to have to, we're going to be having some committee meetings going over this stuff. Anybody got questions about that right now? If not, Nancy, put it in there. You've got your Illinois Municipal League, you got your, uh, your municipal review. Look, uh, take it and look on pages four, five, and six. And this will give you an idea of what you can anticipate in receiving from funds, uh, in the state of Illinois. This, this will give you an overview of your motor fuel funds, your corporate tax, your state income tax, your use tax. And it's all based on per capita. And basically, they're projecting this year, uh, last year, they actually got ninety, we got a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents per person. And this year, they're projecting a hundred and forty-two, but that's just strictly a projection. Uh, sewer funding, we discussed that at the meeting. We brought it, we brought it up basically a little bit. We just wanted to go throw it out there now so people start realizing. We're looking at a total project for the four phases. The projection is eighteen million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. Uh, that's broken into four sections, four sessions. The biggie will be the first one we do is just short of thirteen million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant. And that's not a new plant, is it, Brad? That's just, that's, we're not building a new plant building. That's just do it, we're doing the lagoon, we're getting rid of the missile silos. It's just upgrades. So we're not getting a new, a brand new shiny plant for that thirteen million dollars. And that's, we, we need to get that out to the pump. That's the reason we did this. We talked about it committee last week. Want to get it out front to public so you know what we're going to be looking at, because you're going to be seeing a pretty good increase in the sewer bills for quite a few years to pay for this. We're looking at funding options. The projection now was to finish the, uh, design and get the financing in place in the rain, through, through the remainder of this year, I believe, and start in seventeen with the constructions. That's still pretty much what we're talking. So we won't actually start digging until next year. Because they're, Brad, Brad and Frankie, and I think Leroy was going to, they basically went around and visited different plants with what, with what they have. And what they've done is they worked, they, they visited with the engineers. And they've gone around and picked what they felt is the best of each thing we needed, the best process. Uh, and then that, they're putting those in design. You guys got any more to add to that, Brad or Frank or, you know? So, so these guys, these guys have done a lot, they've done a lot of research and they've been working at this for the past year, visiting plant to plant to plant. And, uh, we, we've met with the engineers, we've met with the financial people, and, and this is what's going to be going. So you're going to be hearing a lot more about this. But that's what the numbers are for right now. It's, they brought, it got broken into four, into four different separate projects, but the total's like eighteen million, eight hundred thousand. Any questions on that? You've got, have a letter from Showbus, uh, just depreciating with what we've given them and what they do. This is automatically plugged in our budget and our appropriation and, uh, Brenda sends that at the appropriate times, which I, I can't, I can't tell you the month it goes out to, if that's set by our appropriation. MediaCom rates, you have a copy of that. Uh, MediaCom on January eighteenth. The local broadcast and service charge is going to go up three dollars and thirty-five cents a month on cable TV. The sports is going to go up thirty-four cents, so basically almost three dollars and seventy cents a month for this MediaCom's number up. We have, they're, they're franchised by us. We have absolutely no control over the rate. So this is just, uh, they have to notify us if they're increasing it. There's not, there's nothing we can do about it. Uh, it's no sidewalk request. You have a copy of the overtime report. I, it was up. But you also have a breakdown because we had, uh, had some holiday pay and we had, uh, training that some of the guys had to go through. So there's, there's basically of the sixty-some hours, there's forty-seven hours that's attributed to the holiday and training. So if you pull that out of there, it's, uh, it wasn't too bad. It's actually about twenty-one hours of actual overtime that wasn't attributed to either, to your training or, uh, holiday. Does anyone else have any other new business? Can you publicly comment on what we've done tonight?
I just have a quick question from a previous committee meeting.
Yes.
I don't like gossip and rumors. I like to hear it from the horse's mouth. On December thirtieth last year, last week, uh, at six-thirty PM, there was a finance committing where the words written on item number three are discussed admin league for Mike plus Herg RT.
We had, we were, we were discussing, basically, we're, we'll get into that in executive session. We're discuss, we're discussing a, Mike's got some health issues.
No, and that's fine. I don't want to get into an executive session. I just was wondering what was discussed in the open session, because I, I like attending open sessions and I messed up. I was wondering what was discussed.
The reason they were there, that was, that, that, that did, that did turn in, that was an open session.
Okay. And so it was discussed for admin league for Mike?
Yeah, basically, basically, that's what was put in the minutes. It should have been, it should have been put in there, which will be when we discuss it later, like medical league.
Okay, so it's not an admin league, it's a medical league?
No, no, not medical league, no, no.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate the question. Uh, any other public comment? If not, we need to go into executive session for personnel hiring, firing, compensation, discipline for... We have a motion for us from Alderman Kennett, second of all, most likely to go into executive session for section two, scene one. Go, go.
Norris? Gertis Hitch? Hassleton? Kennett? Weber? Hoffman? Slagle?